Hey. I got a green button. Oh, this is gonna be horrible. I know, this is... A lot of feedback. How do you mute? There.
It'll be a red.
I'm surprised.
Any bother any? It says your name this morning.
If she announced it, that's it. You're under my...
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by town. Enter your participant ID followed by town. Otherwise, subject will continue. Please enter meeting password followed by town. Emperor, Bigfoot, Quarter, Hope, Wait For And Watch, like, I get. They're working with, uh, Westward and... There are more than twenty participants in the meeting. You have been put on hold by the host.
What in the hell is going on?
That's me.
That's me.
That's me.
Jack, that's me.
Everybody, there's some, uh, there's some...
The further apart people are, but the people at home that don't have the stuff muted, they're gonna give feedback to the system.
They're looking back and watching.
It's all, it's all dead, man, and lots of them, some of them die. That's why I...
The only thing we need to hide is that.
But I can hear myself now.
Where are you going, you? You go down, I'm not. There's nobody around. They're gonna fucking hear you, they're not here.
Especially when they're talking, same time. That's why I tell them to talk about that.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by town.
Can somebody come along, just?
Yes.
Enter your participant ID followed by town. Otherwise, subject will continue. Please enter meeting password followed by town. You are in the meeting now. There are more than twenty participants in the meeting. You have been put on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk until the host releases the hold.
We are getting ready to start the meeting. Anybody that is on their phone for the virtual meeting, please be muted. If you would like to talk, send me a chat message. And then you may unmute.
Okay, well, for everyone that's on with us here, I'd like to welcome you to the Carroll County virtual meeting today, and we hope it goes well. Certainly, I don't have the technical ability to do this, but we appreciate Cameron Yates and him coming in and helping us a lot with this. Our first order we always start our meetings out with is a pledge allegiance. And so, um, I guess I don't turn here in my seat and begin us with that. So if everybody'd like to participate with me at home, there, well, I thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the states of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Beth furnished me with a flag to show during it, but I didn't know how I was gonna show it and turn and say the pledge, so I didn't. Sorry, I didn't have that on for you. Our first order of business after the pledge is the approval of the minutes of the administrative meeting of 3:31, 2020. Gentlemen, if you had opportunity to read those minutes, I would entertain a motion. Okay, so I have Steve making a motion, and I have, this is odd hearing myself repeat here, and Lauren seconded. So all in favor of that motion to approve the administrative minutes, please say aye. Did you aye, Steve?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, motion passed. We're gonna approve the minutes of the emergency meeting that dates back to March 24th, 2020. Did I hear a motion? Steve gives a motion to approve. Lauren seconds a motion, and so I call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of the emergency meeting of 3:24, 2020, please say aye. Aye, motion passed. We need to approve the minutes of the March 16th, 2020 regular minute, regular meeting, excuse me. Okay, so Steve makes a motion, and Lauren seconds. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, motion passed. We are ready for our claims. Okay, we have reviewed the claims, and Steve makes a motion to approve all claims. I will read those to you if we get a second. Okay, we have a second, so Steve approved, or Steve made a motion to approve all claims, and Lauren seconded. Here are the list of claims. Early claims amount to $26,484.40. Then text claims in the amount of $28,829.76. Certified shares in the amount of $382,424.82. PSAP from April 2020 in the amount of $34,409.25. The PSAP from March of 2020 in the amount of $34,409.25. Both those are the same. And approval of the lit, edit, April 20, April, excuse, April 2020 in the amount of So we have a motion and a second on those claims, and I would call for a vote, gentlemen. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion passed. Now we are ready for the opening of our agenda of highway bids. And this will take me just a little bit, but I have the bids all here in front of me. Normally, this is done by, uh, well, code engineer, and so I'm a little unsure of exactly the order I should go on these. I don't know what you... It doesn't matter. Are these, um, these are not, though, segregated by what we're bidding on, right? I got two miles from them, by the way. Okay, I got them. I see on there, it's labeled, and I couldn't, sorry, I didn't see it. What certainly happened to my picture on here, I went through a P on here. Okay. Well, I don't care, I just wanna make sure it wasn't malfunctioning.
So these are all the people that sent them in the list, Paul, Chris, and Will.
Okay, all's on board with this, that's great.
Can we start those? Can we go back to the payroll?
Sure we can.
The chat message and send it down to payroll.
Oh, we have payroll claims, too, that aren't on here, okay? Did I miss order? Oh, I did. Oh, yes, okay. We have a parole claim that I did not mention, it is $219,351.78. Oh, I like that, now I have a screen, it says everyone that's on here. Did I? Okay, let me correct myself here. $219,851.78, did I get it right? Okay. This all seems so for... Now, I'm onto the bids. How that we normally do this is we accept at this time, a bit, since that's the worships of the commissioners, but, um, and then Paul will, our engineer Paul approach will, itemize all these and give them to us, and then we can make a further decision. But right now, what we are doing is accepting that the bids are, have been put into us by the proper time and date, and that they have the right things. Okay, so I have here a milestone bid that is for equipment rental, and it does have the bid bond. Accept that as a valid bid. Boy, that's crazy hearing yourself about a minute later. Now I'm looking at a packet from, again, from milestone contractors, and this is for, itemized for, um, these are for asphalt, binder, surface asphalt, and hot asphalt. Prices are good for the whole 2020 paving season, and applies with all indoc specifications, and it does include the bid bond, and it's on time, so I believe it meets all requirements for the bid. The next one is from Marathon Petroleum Company. Did I do something wrong? Okay. And it's a bid for liquid asphalt emotions, and by Two Minus Materials. Okay, this was, uh... Thank you. It is for materials, and it is from Marathon, and it's by a correct date, and it does have a bid bond with it, so I believe that is a valid bid. This all must be issued in public. The next is from Reese Riley. These are proposals for hot asphalt mixes, cold patch mix, and it is, due date was 4/6, and it was by 4/3M, 10:25AM. We'll open it up here. Okay, it does have the bid bond with it, and it has all the bidding prices, and it is done on time, so it is a valid bid also. This one is from Asphalt Materials Incorporated. Was received on time. It has to contain the bid bond, and it is a valid bid. And that's from Asphalt Materials Incorporated. There's one that I'm a little bit unfamiliar with. I think we have a pleasure of getting a new bidder here. It's the Clint Group for Buy Two Minus Materials. It was received on time. You can't see me, but I'm opening all these like while we're doing this. It does have the bid bond with it, and it is a valid bid. Proper bid. And I have two more packets.
I am watching Carroll County's bid opening through a Zoom meeting. They are not, they're opening them, and say...
Ted? This is a bid from Central Paving. It's hot asphalt, summer and winter cold patching mix, certificate of qualification, and it says on the front line here that has a bid bond, or we can, or we can, the packet right now. You check it, it was received on time. And it does include the bid bond, so that is a valid bid. Two more in here. This is from Central Paving, and it is for liquid dust control. And was received on time. And it does have the bid bond with it, so it is a valid bid, please. One last one here, and it is also from Central Paving, and it is for equipment rental. Was received on time. It does have a bid bond, so it is a valid bid. Now, Ted, you're on here with us, is there anything else I should be doing on this? I don't know, can you join in?
Does all, once you take them under advisement, or accept them all? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Ted. This is Ted Johnson, our county attorney. Uh, what we're about to do is, um, accept them all. Okay, all, you on?
I am.
Go ahead, Paul. What else should I do, Paul?
Please accept all of the bids.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the bids. All right, Steve. Steve says he'll make the motion, and Lauren says he will, he will second it. So I would call for a vote, all in favor of accepting all bids, please say aye. Motion passed. Now we will ask Paul to compile these and come back to us at the next meeting, and we'll have a better picture of what all is in there. Is that all right, Paul?
It's on me.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to move to our next item, and that is the 2020 roadwork map and the 2020 chip and seal roads. Did I miss one? Okay. I think I have behind me here on my desk, um, this map. Steve has provided one there. You're not gonna be able to see it, I don't think, on the... This is, this is showing us the proposed, proposed roads that will be resurfaced with here. Is it 72 miles, Steve? Oh, yeah. Okay, so we got, here it is, Beth just divided it to me. Chip and seal roads by the highway department would amount to 54.6 miles, and pavement solutions that we have, have a grant to take care of will be 79.9 miles. So, looks like about 135 miles, just my rough adding here. Okay. Steve is making a motion to approve this roadwork and chip seal. Questions? Steve made the motion. He'll second the motion. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the road improvements for 2020, which, as I said, amounts to, if I add them up here in my head, it'd be 134.5 miles of road.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
That, that number is way too high in terms of what there, the total shouldn't be 100 and some, it should be somewhere, if I remember right, and I don't have the numbers in front of me. It should be somewhere around 79 miles total, there's the chip and seal.
Well, grand total, I'm adding grand total twice, I'm sorry, Paul, I see what we're doing. It is actually a grand total of 79.9 miles. That sound right, Paul?
Yeah, that's, that's the correct numbers.
So we have chip and seal by our highway department at 54.6 miles, and pavement solutions are going to do a total of 5.8 miles. I believe that's reading the chart correctly now.
Correct, that's good.
Okay. And gentlemen, you made a motion, is that motion still standing? Okay. So I would call for a vote on that motion. All in favor approving this summary of road improvements for 2020, please say aye. Aye, unanimously approved. The next item is a contract with Indoc. This is for the grant, correct, Paul?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, Paul, could you give us just a quick summary of what this, what this is that we're going to be asked to endorse here?
Uh, this is the contract that Indoc requires us to enter into so we participate in the community cross, this grant award that we were given. We were given right at a million dollars, and our chair, Indoc puts up a million, more or less, and then we take it and put in another $333,000 for the paving, which I can't remember, somewhere around 15 miles that we had as part of that program. And this is their typical agreement. And this is their, uh, typical agreement that we need to sign so that, uh, we're, uh, we're with him, so to speak, in terms of having the agreement that we need to have so that we can get the money and move forward.
Yeah. Okay, Steve is making a motion to approve the NDOT contract, and Warren is seconding it. Uh, this, as Steve pointed out, is the same thing we've done for several years now. If you've been lucky enough to, to have these grants accepted, Paul has done the work to get them, all the paperwork and everything done, so we can receive this money. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of endorsing these contracts, please say aye. Motion passed. You'll give me just a second. I will get them signed.
I don't know, does it say anything about signing in blue ink?
Well, if it is, I already started in black. I can go back over it with blue. Does it need to be blue?
I don't think so, but I just feel very facetious for it. Sometimes I don't know if it does, but I don't remember that.
Just sign it. Now that you say that, I remember years past we had to sign in blue. Okay. Twenty twenty twenty. Paul, is there only one place to sign on these?
To the best of my knowledge.
Okay. All right. Didn't we do the, uh, what is it? Oh, okay. Um, Paul, we, we have an item on here of highway bid acceptance date of May eighteenth. Would you explain that to us?
Um, what, uh, what I've been told by contractors at this point in the game in terms of, uh, paving, the roads associated with community crossings, uh, we need to take it and get our bids out as early as we can, so we're trying to beat the bunch before everybody else gets out there, try to get some good prices, and also get a commitment to get the work done yet this summer. So what I'm asking for is that on May the eighteenth, uh, the commissioners would, um, open bids for paving, uh, the three roads we talked about, uh, Carrollton Road, seven hundred west, Greensline Route, nine hundred west, and then also, uh, a little team behind you down in the four hundred south. Those are the three roads that are in there, but basically asking you to set May eighteenth as the date that we would receive and open those bids.
Okay. So, so everyone understands, and we make sure I understand. We just received a grant, and we decide our portion of it, that we'll put up our, um, quarter of it, with three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars roughly, and now we're taking, we're looking at those roads that have been accepted, and we're taking bids from contractors to actually do the work. So, um, I would entertain a motion to set, um, let's see, what's the date here? Um, May eighteenth as the date that bids need to be in by. Okay, so we have Steve made the motion, and Warren has, uh, seconded it, so I'd ask for a vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, motion passed. I believe that completes our highway department business, doesn't it, Paul?
And that's all of the work. Thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate your work, Paul. Uh, again, folks, I feel, I feel like I'm on the moon broadcasting because I'm seeing it, and then a second later hearing it, and then there's a pause, and we hear it coming back in. This is really kind of odd. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Right. They already had it in their budget, so it was just part of, part of maintenance. Okay, we have a part here that is, uh, old sheriff's car to, uh, EMS, emergency management. Um, I saw that Tobes was, yeah, Tobes on here. Doug? Okay, Doug?
Sorry, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Doug.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Uh, yeah, this is just what we would like to do is Tobes had a car that they got rid of, um, took out of service, and is willing to let us use, um, in place of the pool car that we have been using. Um, I sent you guys an email, I think, to explain it a little bit, but there's been some times where we've been out running around delivering supplies and needed to respond, um, on a call as well. We have adding the lights or sirens or radios or anything in that. So this car that Tobes willing to give us has lights already on it. We'll have to change out the lenses, um, but other than that, it has, um, all the antennas to mount radios in, and has a siren and everything in it. So just need to get your approval if we could, uh, use that car instead of the pool car.
I'm, I'm a favorer, I'm going to make a motion and let EMS have that car.
Good, Lauren, what's your opinion? How many miles are on that car? Anybody?
Tobes would have to answer that. I, I haven't actually looked inside it to, to see the mileage on it yet, but I don't know if Tobes knows or not.
Okay, um, Hope's having some audio issues. But Warren has said that he will second the motion, so I have a motion and a second to, uh, move the old sheriff's car that has been retired from the sheriff's department to the emergency, uh, medical service, EMS. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Uh, motion passed.
Thank you.
Now we are, you bet. Thank you, Darren. Coroner, we are down to, uh, the council has authorized fifty thousand dollars for a truck. Now, Steve, was that for just the truck, or was that for outfitting the truck, or? Okay, does that include, that would include in a top or four, then? And, and the gurney or whatever, yeah? Okay, so, um, both my fellow commissioners are in an agreement, so Steve made a motion, and Warren again seconded for, uh, using Q cap money for the amount of fifty thousand dollars for a vehicle and equipment for the coroner. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, motion passed. And we're down to that item that says other essential business. Is there anything else, Beth, that we need to take? Any signatures? Okay, is everybody out there hearing you, Beth? Because I'm not getting this whole echo thing. I do the...
No.
It's coming through? Okay.
No.
I see David on here shaking his head, so, yes, we got, got, uh, everybody on.
What I said was I have to, uh, mission, thousand... Virus.
Okay, okay. I do not see anything else. I certainly hope that everyone out here that has, uh, joined in with us will stay safe. And, um, if there is nothing else that all the commissioners want to run? Uh, uh, okay, bring it up, Steve. Bring everybody here. Okay, my, my fellow commissioners are unmuting right now, so you can hear it.
We discussed that, uh, moving the offices in the courthouse in the last meeting I couldn't attend due to work. Um, and I discussed that they want my opinion. I am good with their opinion on moving the offices, and, uh, once, uh, we're back to open business, I'd like to authorize them to go ahead and start moving.
Okay, let me make sure I'm understanding, Steve. You're wanting us to be ready to move as soon as we're back in business?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because I think it'd be too many people in here at once. Yeah.
I don't know if you can hear Warren or not, but, uh, uh, he's saying he's concerned about dust stirred up in the air and everything that, on the moving, that we, we want to be ready to go. When the time is right. I don't think that needs a motion or anything, does it? Steve, if you want to put it in a motion form, you could, but, okay. All right, that's fine. So your motion is, let me make sure that, well, why don't you restate it, Steve, so I'm sure I'm right? Okay, so when the coronavirus shutdown is com- is completed, then we will be immediately in the process of moving offices here, all right? Okay, and, uh, I don't know that we, what's that? What, okay, state them, Steve, what we're doing. Now, that would be the Veterans Affairs Office that's going to Donkey's Office, which would be the surveyor's office. Yeah, and the old veterans office.
Investigator.
That'd be the prosecutor's investigator will be taking over the office that is currently the area plan office. Yeah, I think that's the first one. And the one that has to be first on that whole arrangement is for the surveyor to move across because that'll start the whole movement. So, um... Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll also have to have all the telephones switched and the computers sort of switched in those rooms, and, uh, so our tech man, Mr. Randy Cleaver, will have to be in and, and, um, preparing for that. Now, is he working any now, Beth, when?
Just...
In here?
He didn't come to wait, but he came to wait, um, steady when it...
Well, he's aware of these changes, so, I guess, can we just leave that with you to notify him, Mr. Win? I don't know exactly how they're going to do that because he'll have to be have lines ready for the surveyor to move over, and yet we don't want to turn the surveyor off too far ahead of time, and we won't have anyone, so... Okay. We'll just let there, those that know what they're doing, go ahead and take care of it. Oh, that's a... Good thing to bring up. Thank you, Steve. Is there anything else that, uh? Okay, Lauren?